Conclusion, Walt, that we have, that there's smoke, then we need to put together a panel of people just to study this, but I don't think we need to do this in an all-day board meeting. Do you know what I, do you think, do you understand what I'm saying? I think it's going to be a lot more effective to designate a panel of trusted individuals to go about the investigation of what these folks are asking us to investigate, put together a panel of people to do that, and then that panel of people will come back and say-
With recommendations.
-with a recommendation that we need to put this into somebody, some authority's hands higher than ourselves, or we need, or we can say, "We are comfortable that nothing had," you know, maybe some, you know, honest mistakes have been made, but nothing erroneous to the point, or nothing, you know, that would warrant another authority becoming involved. That's my, so I say we put together a panel-
Okay.
-do that, meet with these people, because that's really what they want. They want somebody to look at their documentation-
They want to be heard.
-listen to what they're saying, and drawing a conclusion based on what they're saying.
Okay. Is that okay, Mr. Chairman?
That's a tough question, and even tougher response, because I've been going, I've been going at this same group of people since I walked through the door and before I've even walked through the door.
And I know you have.
It seems like now every email I get is pointed to a specific thing, and Mrs. Jordan has received. You've got a copy of nearly everything that I've gotten over the last two or three months, anyway. I've gotten you involved, and I just don't see us doing anything to try to help, and the only way that we're going to help is to try to put together some sort of audit, or something along those lines, to say, "This is what they're doing, they're doing it right, they're doing it wrong." They've, I mean, we can't even get copies of checks. We can't get accounting statements of the dollars that they've spent, because the people that are running the show, the people that are running the show and in the POA, they're a private company.
POSF?
Yeah, they're, they're a private company, and they're not foible.
Are they LLC? What are they?
I believe they're in INC.
They're incorporated?
They're incorporated, they're registered with the State Corporation Commission. That is something-
That's great, because we contribute tax dollars to them.
Okay, see, that's part of the problem.
Well, and so I think where we're at now, because, and Miss Coleridge, you said you wanted to start with this, because we do keep seeing so many people, and the same people come into the board and addressing these concerns, I do think the best place for the board to start is where we are today, which is just getting a baseline understanding of what a sanitary district is, what the board can do under the law of Virginia, and then what, and we're going to start with what a POA is. Now, the POSF is not a POA.
That's, that's mine, and they have a distinct difference between a Property Owners Association and a POA.
Which we're going to get into a little bit.
You're going to go over.
We'll do this, and then you can tell us-
Then we'll address that.
What we need to do.
We're not getting-
See, we've got to go round robin to get that to them.
Well, the plan is today we're get, we're doing more general, just to give you-
Lay the base.
-laying a foundation of just sort of education, giving you an education about the difference between these two entities, sanitary district and POA. Our plan is to then move forward and get into more specific with the POSF. So the questions you're asking today, we don't necessarily have the answers for you today, because we're not quite there.
Okay.
Where we are is we're just laying the foundation so we can, so the board can be better understand what these entities are, and then how to move forward from there, if that makes sense.
That's perfect. I see what you're saying. You're educating us on what we are, what our actions can be.
Right, so that's where we are today. We're doing just the general overview, we're looking at the Sanitary District Act, and then the Property Owners Association Act, and even though the POSF does not fall under a POA, I do think it is still very beneficial for the board to understand the difference between these things.
Okay, and then we can decide on the 27th.
And can I ask a question of either you or Ed? So, the fact that we contribute to a private corporation, how, that relationship is kind of confusing to me, and perhaps we need to go investigate that.
Well, and that's where, that's where the POSF is sort of this own entity, and there are answers to the questions you're asking.
Oh, yeah.
We're not quite there yet today.
I got you.
But we're getting there.
It's not the only corporation that we deal with, let's say, that it's receiving.
That it isn't the only one?
It is not, no.
Wow.
But you could feasibly have the same problem someplace else at some time.
Less of scale.
Yeah, less of, less of scale. And we've got thirty, thirty-five-hundred-ish lots up in Shenandoah Farms, fourteen-hundred of them have been sold. Some of them are sold with a straight-out deed, some of them are sold with deeds through, deeds through the POA or POSF. That is confusing.
It is.
You've got the sanitary district that is being managed by the POSF, but they're not in the sanitary district.
So, so the other thing is that, is it true that Warren County has the most sanitary districts of all the counties in Virginia?
I believe that is, I believe that is true.
I don't know for a fact, but probably. We have a whole lot more than anybody else does.
Right. And they're all, they're all different, they're all-
They're all different.
They're all different.
Very unique.
Yes, they are very unique, and so it is, it's important for the board to understand the sanitary district, which is more under the board's authority versus like a POA or even a POSF-
Which is not.
-where, because they're private entities, there, you are limited in how you can really-
And that's pretty much what this presentation's about.
The oversight that you have. So that's, that's where we're starting.
Let's start there.
We're just starting with the basics today.
Okay.
And so my good-
All right, so sanitary district is a special taxing district allowed by the Code of Virginia. And again, we talked about a creation of a district this morning. We'll have a petition, we have had a petition, we will be having a public hearing, I think it's the 20th, for Shannon Woods, that was held on, that's in the justice room, but to start a district today, you have to have a petition of fifty qualified voters, and if it contains less than a hundred voters, petition of fifty percent of all five voters required. This petition is submitted to the board supervisors, and then after advertisement for three consecutive weeks, the board will hold a hearing on the request. So you guys are actually in this process now.
All right, Shannon Woods is, is asking to become a sanitary district.
Yep.
Okay. Which, how many do we have in the county?
In the county total, thirteen.
Thirteen, so Shannon Woods would be fourteen?
Be number fourteen.
Okay.
So, okay, if approved, the board approves, ordinance creating the boundaries and powers for such district. To approve, the board must find the creation of the proposed district or enlargement of the existing district is necessary, practical, fiscally responsible, and supported by at least fifty percent of persons who own real property in the district. In the case of enlargement, the area proposed would be included. The board would have to survey all property owners.
And how just do we go about surveying the property owners?
We actually send, this information out, Emily will usually send it out before the county administrator.
So, everybody who's property owner?
And then, and if, you know, if you look back, and then the second part is the registered voters.
I was going to say, because they're asking registered voters, not, not property owners.
Right, so there's several parts, and if you look in your, your packet from this morning, and review that again, it'll show you some of the basic information that we're discussing now-
Okay.
-for the Shannon Woods project-
Gotcha.
-as we move forward. And typically, we'll do an evaluation of the road system internally as well, but that's just part of the procedure. In enlarging a district, and we've actually, I mentioned, we've had a request from a resident in a district we don't maintain recently, so we were reviewing the code anyway, but the board supervisors may enlarge a district upon receiving a petition of twenty-five percent of the qualified voters residing within the territory proposed to be added to the district. A public hearing must be held first in accordance with the Virginia Code as well. So you can change, you can enlarge a district. Merging districts, the board supervisors may merge two or more sanitary districts created within the county into one sanitary district upon receiving a petition of at least fifty qualified voters residing within the boundaries of each district, desiring to be merged together. Public hearing has to be held as well, so everything we do, the public gets an opportunity to speak and to be heard, and I know that's one of the things you guys are concerned with. Powers and duties of the board supervisors, also known in the Code of Virginia as the governing body. We have the power to construct, maintain, and operate water supply, sewage, garbage, removal, disposal, heat, light, firefight equipment, power, gas, dams, drainage, streets. We mainly focus on streets here, as you know, and the ones we maintain. Parking lots, curbs, gutters, sidewalks, community buildings, centers, and other recreational facilities, please the public. We do have agreements with large sanitary districts, and we'll get into all this today, but some of those agreements do involve water. We don't maintain any of those, but if they're a sanitary district, you have to have an agreement, like Shenandoah Shores.
That's one thing I heard, at Lakefront World, they, they thought they were going to have to pay for water and sewer, that that was, we were going to control them being able to use their own wells and septic systems.
Right, you get a lot of that kind of stuff, but, I mean, in Warren County, primarily what we do in maintenance is just roads.
Roads.
Yes. Powers and duties of board supervisors continue. This is, the power system facilities already exist within the district, rights, title, interest agreements, therefore, into real estate, sale, lease, transfer, disposal of our property. I mean, to do those things also, you have to have a public hearing, dispose of property. You may use eminent domain, contend property.
That's where they got that from, and were worried.
And it's only for those three specific things.
Those three items, waterworks, you know, construction water, sewer lines, and, I mean, a situation where you were going to move water or sewage, you would have to be in a critical position, because the town's not going to want it-
Well, I told them, the fact of giving water and sewer to the top of that mountain was probably never going to happen.
Yeah, I was going to say, not to be concerned about that.
Yeah.
The board also has, they can require owner's attendance of any property within the district to connect with any systems, and these are just the basics from the code. We don't do all these things, we just want you to understand what your powers and duties are as governing body for the sanitary district. To levy and collect annual tax upon a property in the district that goes toward constructing, maintaining, and operating such systems, that's probably one of the biggest ones that you do for all the districts, whether they maintain or not. To borrow for the purpose of meeting casual deficits in the revenue of the district or creating a debt in anticipation of the collection of revenue of the district. Contract with any person, firm, corporation, municipality, county authority, or federal government, or agent to acquire, construct, maintain, alter, improve, and operate such systems. So just basically, going through it again, it's, you can, you can, you can employ compensating clerical support for construction, operation, maintenance, et cetera. You can employ and compensate out of the funds of the district, any special policeman if they were needed to maintain order. So, you know, the code's very specific on what you can and cannot do as board supervisors. You may appoint advisory board members regarding the sanitary district, and members of the advisory board will serve at the pleasure of the board supervisors. So, I think, before we get to the benefits, I think, knowing as the board of supervisors, when we, when we talk about the sanitary district, you're the governing body. I think that's important to recognize, because often, even, you know, when we're talking projects or whatever, it kind of gets blurred, you know, if you just talk about the county and the sanitary district. The sanitary district, when it's created, you know, you're going to hear the people that live there, but you're the ones who are actually going to set that tax rate after a public hearing. They're going to, they're going to make a recommendation to you.
Okay, but if you've got, like a POSF, your POSF is also the advisory board.
Right.
I don't see how you can eliminate one without eliminating the other.
Well, so then, the reason the POSF, like, they're board of directors is the advisory board, is because in our sanitary district management agreements that we have with them, we designate them as the advisory board. The POSF exists completely outside of the board of supervisors, but the board of supervisors agreed to make them the advisory board. So they are two separate things. You could, same thing with, go ahead.
I was going to ask you then, so could it be that we create our own advisory board for Shenandoah Farms, and we have absolutely no arrangement with the POSF then? Is that what you're saying?
Um, I would have to look at the contract to see exactly where those two intersect. I don't think it's simply, the management agreement is not simply in regards to their position as an advisory board. However, I do think, regardless of that management agreement, I do think the board of supervisors has the ability to create an advisory board, because I know that there's been some concern that the advisory board doesn't represent all of POSF. Well, if there was another advisory board created, I don't know if that would really be the most prudent thing to do. I think you could do it, but that is something, I mean, the advisory board does serve at the pleasure of the board supervisor, so if you did-
The POSF doesn't.
The POSF does not.
Correct.
But their role as the advisory board does, same thing with every other sanitary district, where we have the, the POA board of directors designated as the advisory board. You could change that.
Who is designated as the advisory board at, as, in Shenandoah Farms right now?
The POSF.
So the POSF, but we have no, but they're not serving at our pleasure, so that's, that's adverse to the-
Well, but that's the contract that we enter into.
How does the contract run out?
I, I don't think it necessarily does. It's a perpetual?
Yeah, when they, when they, the people actually sold it, or the developer that sold it, I don't believe he put an end date on it.
Uh, well, I know that the management agreement, there was one way back then, I think it was signed in like the nineties, and, but then we amended it in 2011. I don't know exactly what that contract says. Again, that's where we're going to get into more of the specific information the next time.
Yeah, the next time we're talking, we're talking specifically about Shenandoah Farms.
Correct.
I mean, and now I'm just hitting the hot, when I jump in, I don't mean to, but I'm hitting the highlight of what I'm actually seeing, because I am, I'm beginning to understand where some of the people that gripe or that have concerns are, in my mind, legitimate concerns, because they can't simply be explained away.
Well, and if we, so, so I'm finding conflict here, that if the board of supervisors expects an advisory board and has, and that board is to serve at the pleasure of the supervisors, then a, an independent POSF that is made up of people that have been selected by-
The people who can-
The people-
Elected.
Yeah, there, there's a conflict here, because we aren't appointing them, we don't have any control, we have no, yeah, there's no input, so you're breaking the chain of org, the organizational chain is broken at that point. So to me, that's where the problem is. But anyway, we can keep going.
You also-
Do you understand, Roger, what I'm saying?
You've got people that are-
Because the advisory board functions at your pleasure, the POSF isn't at your pleasure.
Exactly.
So you could cut them off as the advisory board if they weren't doing what you wanted to do.
Exactly, that's what I'm trying to get to.
I guess the question you're looking for is, are they doing what you want them to do?
Yeah. Roger's over there shaking his head, sorry, I had to ask.
So typically, your sanitary district manager will meet with your advisory board, and they'll bring back information to you that you need, you don't, Miss Coleridge has said in many meetings, but you guys don't usually attend every walk.
I haven't attended any, so-
No, that's, and that's okay, it's not your district. I get that, so.
So, and we'll get into it a little further, I mean, but there's a distinct difference between a POA or a POSF, a corporation's business, and the sanitary district advisory board, and, and we'll see that fees and funds, you know, there are groups out there that get more money sent to them than Shenandoah Farms, even though they're the biggest.
And Shenandoah Farms is the biggest, they're the biggest recreational, recreational area in the whole state.
Yeah, they are. It's the largest subdivision, too, right? That's what I'm told.
Yeah.
How many, how many lots are there?
A third, I think there's about thirty-five. I remember the, I remember that number.
You mean thirty-five-hundred lots? Yeah, so, which makes it the largest subdivision in Virginia.
I believe it's, it's the first or second, I read, I can't remember which, but it's-
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
It's huge, yeah.
So, we'll keep on going. So benefits, sanitary district taxes, because we're talking about the collection, if you ask any questions, they're collected through county, and one of the benefits is it can be collected through one's escrow account, which helps with the collection for a lot of these, a lot of these associations in the county sanitary districts. Tiered systems, many of them have, have a tiered system to allow for lower rates on undeveloped lots. New construction road use fees paid by builders prior to emissions of the permit, we just had one of those, what, two minutes ago, I guess it was, we reviewed that. Makes subdivision eligible for various state and federal disaster relief funds, and gives ability to raise additional revenue to make necessary improvements to the community. It can, I mean, there's no need for the board of directors to place liens on property, because unpaid sanitary district taxes would have to be paid before the sale of the property. A lot of the, a lot of the older groups, you have to go down and put liens on their homes themselves, so that's one of the reasons those guys like to, to have an agreement with us, they don't have to do that anymore. Brings stability to the community, increases property values, and it can improve the credit status of the community as well. So, in the management structure, the board supervisors is designated to run the district. The board supervisors could contract with the POA or owner's group to run the district, and we use that owner's group term, because there's so many other terms out there. POA or owner's group would submit budget annually to the county and propose tax rates. So each one of these groups is going to submit to you guys the proposed tax rate each year. Our county will collect the sanitary district taxes and remit to the POA or owner's group less the collection fee, and that's the three hundred and fifty dollars plus five percent of collections. Five percent of collections accounts for all money that's collected, road use, impact fees, anything that comes through, you know, if it's taxes, penalties, interest. So five percent is everything collected within the district. Or, in the case the county maintains sanitary districts, we may remit a contract service payment to the owner's group.
Is that what we do with Shenandoah Farms?
Right.
Okay.
And I can ask specific questions as far as amounts, values, et cetera, and I have that toward the end.
Okay.
Again, you must approve the, the rates, tax rates, and the annual budget. You can step in, if it's not operated properly, they should follow, sanitary districts require to follow county and state procurement requirements, and the county requires owners to have an annual audit, and that's typically in our agreements as well. Code of Virginia allows the board supervisors to abolish a district, sanitary district, at any time. Got the thirteen districts listed up here with the number of lots, when they were established. Shenandoah Farms just went up, I mean, they do change based on consolidations, but this, this number should be close to most of the districts. They'll change every year. We usually go to the commissioner's office each year when we get ready to look at the taxes for the next year, and just see how many lots are there, consolidated, et cetera. This is a map that shows the current sanitary district.
How many does Shannon Woods have?
How many lots? Um, I have that.
It's in our, it's in our-
Yeah, I'd say, I can't remember off the top of my head.
Yeah, I can't either.
It's a small one.
Yeah, it's a very small, it's a, it's a half-mile road, and the first section of Shannon Woods is already making about-
Well, Palm's fourteen lots.
That's what I thought it was, really, though.
Yeah. It's actually relatively a good location for our current operations, but this shows you all the districts that we have in the county.
And these are the years they were-
Right. Yeah, established.
Yeah, they were established in the number of lots that currently exist.
And I, I said there could be some potential updates to the current lots. I had a check with the commissioner's office this year.
Now, there'd be one, maybe one person that owns twelve.
Right.
Or there may be one person that had three lots and combined them into one.
This is where they're at, located throughout the county. A little tough to read with the light on, but that shows you each one, just, I mean, we have them spread out throughout the county, but, like I said, thirteen, possibly fourteen, if we, if Shannon Woods owned one. You want that back then?
No, I can look at it later.
Okay. I'd like to see where they are. New construction road use fees, the most recent one, you guys approved in South River Estates.
Yeah, we just voted on it.
Yeah, fifteen hundred dollars, but most of the districts do have a road use fee. Tax rates, just, you know, in your package, if you wanted to see what's going on. You can also see the separation, the tax rates online, but, you know, you guys will be setting the tax rates, they'll, all the districts will provide you with information as we get into budget season, and they'll, they'll let you know what, if they're a non-county maintained sanitary district, I mean, they'll send you that information, and county maintains will send you the information, what they feel they need, and then if there is contract service available, they'll give you a breakdown of why they need that one. Also, we have the collection rates, one of the biggest improvements for, especially, like Shenandoah Farms is probably one of the lowest, but as Walt mentioned, they have such a big population. The collection rate, we figured that in one fiscal year with the tax collection, but we found, you know, that our rates in most of these districts are very good, I mean, we're usually, you know, ninety-plus in most districts. You can see South River had a ninety-seven point eight, I mean, you have a lot of districts that are over ninety-seven percent for collection.
So can they go three years and not pay, like in your real estate taxes? Same rule?
Yep, same rule. So that, that takes a burden off of the homeowners association or a POA. They don't have to go down and do the liens themselves, you know, so that's what I say, it helps out if there is a board of directors, the county really takes care of that. And again, they, you know, as a sanitary district, you are eligible for help with disasters, because you're a unit of local government, so you can get FEMA funding for a local disaster, and it's hard to see the graph, but we have had districts in the past get some funding That's just the Patriot County staff for the maintained groups, you know, that's one of the things, we have our public work staff and our Shenandoah Farms staff out there helping out on the job. Next, we're going to get into property owner's associations, I don't know if you want to talk here.
Yeah, I think that's fine. So first, the POAs are regulated by the Virginia Property Owners Association Act, that is in the Virginia Code. And I just highlighted a few of the key definitions in the code. The POA is the incorporated or unincorporated entity upon which responsibilities are imposed and to which authority is granted in the declaration. And then the declaration is the document that essentially is created and filed in land records and attaches the responsibilities for the POA to all of the lots within that So it essentially creates the authority in the POA to impose on lots a mandatory payment of money in connection with provision of maintenance or services for the benefit of some or all of the lots or the common areas. And then the board of directors is the executive body of the POA that exercises the power of the executive body by resolution or by law. So, membership to the POA is required, so if it's Property Owners Association, your lot is within that development, then you have to be a member of the POA. That's why the POSF is a separate, separate, different type of animal, because its membership is voluntary. You can elect to be a part of it or not. But because membership is required, the seller of the property has to notify the purchaser of the property that it is a POA, and it has to provide them a full disclosure packet prior to the sale of the property. It is the association itself that has to provide the disclosure packet, because it requires all of this information, which includes how funds are spent, the annual budget, all charges that you're going to have to pay, whether or not your, your lot is liable for unpaid charges and fees. You also have to clarify any restrictions, such as displaying a flag or political signs, and then you also have to provide copies of the POA's documents. have to provide copies of the POA's documents, like the declaration, the articles and corporation bylaws, the rules and regulations, including with the minutes, the last six months that the board of directors approved minutes. So, if your, if your home is in a POA, the POA has the authority to charge fees for services provided or related to the use of the common areas, or charge fees related to whether or not your POA is professionally managed, or if it's not professionally managed. I've just cited those code sections there, because it is a lot of information that I felt was sort of more than what we wanted to get into today. But, those two code sections reference what you have to do in either, in either situation. And then, of course, they can assess a late charge if you don't pay your dues within sixty days. So, POA's responsibilities. They have to keep detailed records of receipts and expenditures affecting the operation administration of the POA, and all of these records have to be made available to members who are in good standing. So, if you're a member of a POA, you can always request documentation of what's been spent. They have to provide it to you. There's only a few exceptions to information that doesn't have to be provided, such as individual lot owner or member files. Those don't have to be provided. And then, it acts similar to FOIA, because they also can charge fees for any request for the copies of the documentation. The, the code requires that a POA meet in accordance with the bylaws, but at least once a year, once a year, and there has to be proper notice given. And then, a POA also has to file an annual report and pay a fee as prescribed by the regulations of the Common Interest Community Board. And then, the board, board of directors, they, their meetings must be open to all members of record. Their minutes have to be recorded, and they have to provide proper notice so members can, can attend if they would like.
Is that verbally recorded or note, note recorded?
You have to, I don't, they have to, the minutes have to be recorded, similar to how ours have to be recorded. And they have to be kept on file, because any disclosure packets have to include at least the last six months for any new.
That can be paper recorded.
I, I would have to check the code to see if it specifies. I don't believe it specifies one way or another. If it has, are you talking about it has to be electronic, or it has, has to be?
Yeah, electronic or paper.
I believe it could be either one, as long as it's recorded and they're approved.
Okay.
So, the board of directors, they have the authority to establish, adopt and enforce rules and regulations with respect to the use of the common areas, and they also have the authority to enforce, to enforce these rules and regulations, such as, you know, filing for an injunction if a member is not adhering to the rules and regulations. They also have the right to suspend the member's right to use the facilities or common areas if they haven't paid their dues. They can assess charges against any member for violating the declaration or rules and regulations. They can file legal action against members for those violations. They can let these special assessments against their members, but only if doing so is in the best interest of the POA, and the proceeds are used primarily from the maintenance and upkeep of the common area. And then, they can also obtain liens against property if you haven't paid your assessments. And so, the, the POA is very different in regards to Santeria District, because Santeria District is something that's created through the board supervisors, and it's more regulated by the board supervisors. A POA is something that's created privately. It's created through the filing in land records. Instead, the, the board doesn't have the authority to really oversee POAs. The POAs are over, they receive oversight through their declarations, their bylaws, their articles and corporation, and then, of course, the Property Owners Association Act, you know, sort of creates that framework with, that they have to act with them.
And I've seen the laws of the HOA in the state of Virginia, and it's a book that looks like this. Yeah, I have one.
Any questions on POAs?
No, no worries.
And a POA is synonymous with an HOA, right?
So.
Homeowners and property owners, that, yeah.
So, in the code, there is only POA. And I was talking to Mike about this, because I wasn't totally sure what the difference is between HOA and a POA, and he might have some more insight, because we do have HOAs within the county.
We do.
Yeah, typically, I mean, I think you'll see deeds or covenants, it'll, it could be written as Property Owner's Association or HOA, either way. Most of the time, you see POA, there's common property involved.
Right.
In HOA, it's just homes, and you just have.
Okay, so I, I understand that.
I don't think that that's a hard and fast rule, because I've seen places that's.
But it makes sense.
Yeah.
But if you have neither.
If you have neither.
Right. Shandau Farms has neither.
They have POSF, and that's how that was established by the original developer.
Years and years ago.
Yes, yes, and then.
And the POSF is, is a, an incorporation, which means it can be profit. It can be for profit.
Correct, and we're paying them.
And an HOA, or a POA cannot profit, right?
They have to, any charge they assess has to go back into the maintenance, has to go back into those specific, those identified allowable things, like the maintenance of common areas. So, it's, it can't be for profit, and that is restricted in how it can use its funds. So, its funds, they collect their funds based on what they need.
Right, which is a POA.
Right.
Um, but a PO, but, but an incorporation is a whole different animal.
Right, I believe it acts, it, it, it acts differently. It is not, like, the POSF is not regulated by the Virginia Property Owners Association Act. It is outside of that, because it's not a POA.
Okay.
And the only other thing I would say is some things I've, I have seen HOAs and POAs used interchangeably. So, just because somebody says it's an HOA, if there is a filed declaration, if it essentially adheres to the description of a POA, it's technically a POA pursuant to the code. They just may refer to it as an HOA.
Gotcha. Okay.
Yeah.
But if, but if they're neither, it's a problem.
But if they're neither, they're something different.
Right. I mean, that's, just preparing us, that's one of the questions. We've got to make sure that we're absolutely clear on.
Right, and that's where we'll get into further when we get into more specific things regarding with the POSF, because it is different than a POA. But, the next slide that we have just kind of is an overview. Mike prepared this information.
Yeah, and, I mean, it's just something that I, I was working on myself. I don't know, in fact, what questions we would field, try to discuss, if you guys can see it that far, but I was trying to look at county maintained versus non-county maintained Santeria districts, and also the association type. So.
I want to take my fingers and make it bigger. I know. Can you make that bigger for me?
You know?
We can send you the presentation.
Yeah, we can email it to you.
I can send you.
Yeah, because I can't read it on camera.
Well.
I know, sorry.
I can send it back.
Yeah, my eyes don't do that. I want to make it bigger with my, I'm trying to go.
I'm struggling with my double vision. Let me do this.
I don't think it'll let me blow it. What, you know, we can't take it down. I brought my flash trap with me.
So, I was going to see if I could expand it.
Oh, there.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
There you go. That helps.
It's bigger, I can't read.
Oh, no.
That's better. Okay, at least I can see it.
All right, so, this is just something that I worked on, just trying to.
Mike, that's awesome.
Just to give us a little more sense of what's happening out there, and, because I, I hear POSF, and that's where you're having issues or concerns, and, you know, and then we're here in INC. But, there's a whole lot of INCs at other locations in how they're registered. I mean, you have INC at Lakefront Oil, HOA INC in Landon Heights, Shangri-La, POA INC, High Knob Owners Association INC, and Skyline Estates. It's a community corporation. So, there are multiple owner, owners groups out there that aren't just a straight POA or HOA, and most of that information you can find on our website as well. I can't promise you that every contact is up to date, because I know there's some changes, but under a Santeria District, it shows you those things. But, looking at county maintained Santeria districts, you can see that we have POA, we have HOA, and then I have the, the little asterisks here, and I mentioned those earlier, I think, to somebody today, but multiple communities, like Wildcat Drive, that's Santeria District, you have Aspen Hills Two in Landon, the Blue Ridge, so there were, you know, small groups of homes, and I think there's Aspen Hill of Skyview Section, so I think there's actually three subdivisions, multiple communities. They had an informal HOA there. So, with Wildcat Drive and with Osprey Lane, actually, when we took over, we don't have the same type of agreement. We just have an advisory board there. They were road school groups. They actually gave us monies.
You were?
Say, hey, we don't want to handle anything anymore. We want you guys to do it. So, they gave us monies, like Landon Heights, to put towards some potential projects. Wildcat Drive, I've already spent what they've given me, but we've, we've done some asphalt rehabilitation. So, they actually provided us funds. So, that's a different type of organization.
So, Mike.
So, the advisory boards.
I'm confused.
Okay, go ahead.
You just said that we did some work for.
Wildcat Drive.
Wildcat Drive, okay, so that is a county maintained.
Yes, all of these.
The non-county maintained.
Yes, these are county maintained.
We just processed the monies that they collect and we give it back.
That's number, that's, that is the number one reason that places become a Santeria District. You saw the collection rates on some of the previous slides.
Correct.
Were usually ninety percent collection plus in most districts.
I want to get that church you gave me.
So, we give it back to that Santer, so for instance, we give it back to them, and they do their own, like, High Knob, which has a large number of homes, maintains its own road system?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, so you're, you're turning.
Yeah, but Jerry Comroy is there, or he was.
Right, yeah, Jerry's still there. And I occasionally communicate with some of those guys, because he, like, E nine one signs, it's kind of off the path here a little bit. The county takes care of those. It's part of my house, and we go into High Knob, so I'll have to see, you know, hey, can we get in, because it is a gated community. But, we send funds back, and I know you guys have one of these.
Yeah.
Spotway Home, and if you go to, you know, each of the Santeria Districts, you'll see what they've requested, what's approved, and you can flip back here on the Santeria District page, and it'll show you, like, Blue Mountain. You know, here's their sixty-five cents per twenty, per lot plus twenty for per hundred, and then, what's the contract payments for road maintenance, snow removal. This, this also includes our expense, but everything other than what they pay the county goes back to each one of these districts that's not maintained. So, Cedarville Heights, you know, theirs is very small, thirty-seven hundred dollars. That one basically was established, most of the roads have been turned over to VDOT.
Right.
You know, so, we're looking out in Skyline Estates, two hundred and thirty-five thousand five hundred and eleven dollars. That's pretty big. Shandau Shores, two hundred and twenty-two thousand four hundred and sixty dollars.
How about Shandau Farms?
Shandau Farms, their budget, so that's where we're a little different, because we're talking about county maintained and not. I put the whole budget here, and I put dispersed contract services, and I didn't get into the whole amount, because I knew it'd get confusing. Shandau Farms, when we're talking about the Farms, their total budget is eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars. Their contract service amount is ninety-three thousand dollars. So, the contract service they're receiving is less than half as much as a lot of these other groups that we're sending out. I mean, and I'm not saying that makes up for, you know, any questions. I'm just saying that we're proving budgets.
Contract service amount.
Right.
Is not a, that's what we give them to use?
Contract services. So, as part of the budget process, and that's, that's, I think that's important for you guys to understand, because this will really be your first budget cycle.
Right.
As we get ready. So, the HOAs, all of these guys, in some form or fashion, whether it's through me or through the POSF, last year, the POSF came in themselves, you know, not everybody comes in. Some of the groups will just work with the manager. But, they will, they will request, like, I had a contract for the manage groups, so I'll meet with the advisory board, and I'll ask, like, Front Royal, you know, okay, what are your expenses this year? We have insurance, we have a newsletter, we have this. This is what we need, Mike, to, and then go to their budgets, fifteen thousand five hundred and sixty-nine dollars, legal fees, whatever it is. So, you'll get the same thing for Landon Heights, and it's like two thousand. If you have a budget book, you can open it up, look, contract service, and think it's two thousand dollars. For a number of years, they didn't even ask for anything, because they, you know, had additional funds left over when they became a Santeria District. But, they'll request that. You'll actually see that amount and what it's for. The other groups, you know, they're setting a rate, they're going to bring that to you. You know, the treasurer's office is going to collect it all. The commissioner, that's where they're going to get the basis for the tax, the number of lots. So, all of that is, is going to be known when it happens, and, and you guys ultimately will, will vote on the budget at the end of the day.
And that's what they, you sent back to these ones that are these non-county maintained.
Okay.
So, you can see that they are. And that's just one, that's the fourth quarter. Typically, typically, the second quarter of the year, because I mentioned, our budget, our budget cycle wore on a fiscal. You know, collections, we started collecting in, you know, the January to December period. So, you know, our, our budgets, as far as releasing the funds to these districts, your second quarter is when you're going to have the majority of your funds. You're going to have full funding for that fiscal year. So, what will happen is, we'll send out all these guys, the majority of their funds will go out in that second quarter. Now, it looks like you got a fourth quarter there. So, if there are, if there's a road impact fee or other monies collected, there will be, that, that collection fee will, will be coming off there also for the county. Makes sense? Couple other things I just thought I'd mention, you know, looking at, you know, just the county maintained districts, you know, Shandau Farms is the biggest. I mean, looking at full-time staff, Shandau Farms is the only district that actually has full-time staff designated in their budget. Like, they have full-time staff, county staff designated to Shandau Farms. We have public work staff. We don't work in every district every day. We actually have some public work guys that are ninety-nine percent of the time in Shandau Farms as well.
Wait a minute.
Yes, sir.
They, they have got full-time staff?
Not the POSF. We're talking about the Santeria District.
Okay, I understand, I understand.
And that's where, you know, they, it's easy to cross the lines, the Santeria District. So, I'm trying to give you a really broad picture.
You can flate the two a lot. People do.
It's tough. I mean, you know, I mean, even when you're, you know, Caden and I are speaking legal, it's easy to crisscross, or yes, Jason, something, you know, it's.
You never know which hat's on.
Yep. So, I wanted to just give you a breakdown, you know, looking at it too budgetarily, miles of road maintained. And, you know, it's easy to sit there and say, well, Mike, why didn't you give us the average per mile? Well, you can't, you can't just look at the average per mile, because you have to realize that we also have common areas. You know, we have a community center, we have a lake, we have, and I just put a couple of things, but, you know, who has dams? Lakefront Oil has one, Shandau Farms has two. So, you have to look at all those things, because you have places that don't have any community area, and they have a one mile of road, so it's hard to compare them to a, a location that has three thousand homes, where you have, one has ten, they don't have any dams there, they never reconstructed one or had to borrow money. But, at the end of the day, you know, if you compare, you know, Lakefront Oil and Shandau Farms, you'll actually see that Lakefront Oil, you know, per mile is spending a little more money than Shandau Farms per mile, if you do a breakdown. But, the common area maintenance, again, you know, you, you have to realize, you know, where Landon Heights doesn't have any common area, but Lakefront Oil, you have a POA responsible for that lake and dam area, and in Shandau Farms, you have POS, who is responsible for multiple common properties, a community center, and dams, and then lakes. So, there's a whole lot more going on out there than some of these smaller districts. Now, we don't get as involved in the ones we don't manage. You know, High Knob's got a whole lot of stuff going on up there, you know, but we don't hear as much, we don't, we don't get as much, because they are managed internally. Those guys are just having us do the collection.
And we take a five percent.
Five percent.
Fee for collecting.
For everything collected, plus three hundred and fifty dollars. For everything collected, plus three hundred and fifty dollars.
Administratively, I got it.
Yes, yep.
Does that go to the county or the treasurer?
Well, the county, the treasurer's office, the county, I think it's in the county.
Treasurer's office gets the money.
The collection, yeah.
And I'm wondering whether it ends up as a county receipt or the treasurer's receipt.
I don't, I'm not sure.
Okay.
I'm not sure. I don't see that funding. I mean, I see, I see the billing, we do the billing for the sanitary district. And I think that's supposed to cover all the costs of all, any kind of administrative work that is done.
Yeah.
But I don't see the final revenue where it's put. Now, I can tell you the public works revenue, we have public works revenue from, you know, I bill all the man of sanitary districts and then that goes into public works revenue, which ultimately is offsetting revenue to offset cost in the public works budget. At the end of the day, similar to tipping fees at the transfer station.
Which brings me to my next question, which is a little bit outside, but not so. So we have project managers for how many of these sanitary districts?
Project, you mean eternal county?
People who run, people who run the projects. Now, I know you're, you're the primary one, but Shandau Farms, we're hiring one, correct?
Shandau Farms, for years, they had one.
Right.
And then it was vacant. And then.
Who paid for that? We did or they?
No, they do.
They do.
And then Bob came. And Bob became ex-official, Shandau Farms manager.
Right.
And a portion of his salary was charged to Shandau Farms.
Right.
And then when with Bob leaving, we're reinstating that position with the same money that it was before. But it would have been used to pay Bob or part of a new deputy county administrator.
Are we interviewing for that position now?
Not yet.
It's two, I think, I think next, Jody's there, I think next Friday, the thirteenth.
I think that's when we said we were going to start reviewing.
I think that's when they're.
Open until filled, but.
Okay, good deal.
Next one we'll start reviewing is two, basically two weeks from today.
Okay.
How many candidates?
I'm, uh, do you remember, Mike?
What's that?
How many candidates we have?
I think we, it was four or five.
Four, four.
I was going to say.
Four, five.
Three that I know of and I thought there were a couple of others.
That's excellent, that's good. Good, that's a good pool of folks to choose from.
Yeah, but we have some good candidates there.
Good deal.
Be an interesting choice to look at.
Any other questions?
No, you guys, oh my gosh, thank you. This has been incredibly educational because there are so many conflating terms and you don't know who's, what you're referencing, you know? And, and how these are, are independent. Now, you have up there that Lakefront Royal and Linden Heights and Shandau Farms are all incorporated entities. So they're not your traditional P O A, H O A then, is that correct? Or is it a P O A that's just inked?
P O A.
Well, free of the law.
P S F is a little different, yeah.
Because a P O A can be incorporated or unincorporated.
What's the benefit of doing that to ford them? Is it?
I think it's protection, right? It's, it's protection, yeah.
So like an LLC has that protective layer and a.
And then incorporation also has, I, I am not entirely sure what all the benefits are to that, but there are benefits to doing it incorporated versus unincorporated.
Okay.
And so if I had to guess, I would say that Lakefront Royal is definitely like a P O A, it's just incorporated. But that's without me looking at the actual documentation.
So what I'd like to do as a follow-on to this presentation is create a list of questions, like we did for, when we had questions for sands or we have questions for Hummel. Create a list of questions and I think that'll help us hone in on what we want to do with respect to the farm.
Questions for the farm?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think that would be great because this area is just so extensive and because we have so many sanitary districts and they're so different. It would be really beneficial because I know we were trying to, to figure out. Yes, what your questions would be so we would be prepared. So if we had that, that would be, I think that would be very efficient.
Questions and then we can, and then we can take those questions and maybe expound on them for when we do meet with the folks.
We'll have a meeting with the farms.
At the farms, right, okay.
But we won't do that for the twenty-seventh, we're going to.
Correct.
Correct, okay. So.
We're going to have a visioning on the twenty-seventh?
People will come.
Yep.
Do you want, what time do you want it?
It's fine with me, whatever time is convenient for you guys. But I think that we could use that Tuesday for that purpose, especially since it could be a follow-on to the E D A's establishment of their strategic goals. And then we can evaluate those strategic goals and how they might align with the vision that we have for Warren County or not, you know?
Some of.
Hopefully they'll merge.
Well, they may, but you know.
They may be a subsidiary of yours.
Right.
Because you have a much broader picture.
Right. Economic development is only one piece, right? And then you have other components to that.
Thank you.
You guys want to have it?
Yay.
Mike, thank you, you and Caitlin, oh my gosh, yeah, that's an awesome job. Thank you so much.
I guess we'll leave that pointer, I'll get this to Jody here.